Okay, all right, we can go ahead and gavel in. All right. So now I'm calling together, our calling together, calling to order our official business meeting for today. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Is there any public comment?
Good morning. If you're a part of the attendees and you would like to make a comment to the board, please use the raise hand feature. And if you are going to speak, please provide your name and the city you live in. And there is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. All right, directors, okay. I'm going to start with, and Kimberly's not here, but I will start with an update on the CARES funding. And I have a handout if you want to pass around, and we can make this available electronically also. One of the things we talked about last time is, is we collect funding quarterly. We wanted to make sure we were giving sort of the most updated information in terms of money that's been expended. And then I'll also talk a little about some of the priorities that we have that we're able to share right now. So this document that I'm handing out, you've seen before, but it has updated numbers in it. So if you work from left to right, where we talk about fund allocation, that is the total money that was given into the state and all of the different categories. ESR, we refer to them as ESR one, two, and three, but they have different names, CARES, CARISSA, and ARP. These are the funding for, the funding allocations that have provided from the federal government. GEAR is the money that was given to the governors, to the governor for allocation and has been designated to us for uses. We saw a little bit of update on that yesterday. The grant is the one that we applied for that we're using for eLearning Central. There's a breakdown for child nutrition programs. We have been able to provide free lunches for schools throughout this past year. When you think about reimagining how we do things, it would be great to be able to continue to offer free meals to all students. And so certainly areas we can talk about, and then some additional dollars on, on homeless and IDA that were all part of ARP, which was ARP is sort of what we're calling the ESR three as well, just for consistency standpoint. So as you work across, the first column is the total allocation. The second column is the amount available to LEAs. And then the third one is the amount that they've spent to date. And that means what they've submitted a reimbursement request for. The very first round, we sent out to schools and then they sent us, they reported back after the fact. The second, the third rounds have to be reimbursement only, so they have to spend it and ask for the money back. And then we reimburse them all through our system. And so that's why it looks a little bit different. It does not mean they have not designated how it's going to be used, and it doesn't mean they don't have a plan. This is just the amount that's been reimbursed. If you go to the maximum SEA reservation, that's the amount that we have. When I mentioned yesterday, that was over 100 million, just when you add those up, that's each of those pots that we've been able to use. If you look at the next column, you see how little we've actually expended yet. And there's, there's sort of two reasons for that. The first one was the amount that we use to really get all schools online. And that was the money we used for the Canvas to make sure everybody had a platform. And we paid those user fees and then we use gear money to get everybody connected. The rethink grant was funding, expanding that program for all schools. And we talked about replacing virtual options for schools. We want to make sure we give them as much as we can from our resources that's available to them. So they don't have to expend their dollars. We did just send out a second round of grant applications for educators to apply to write courses for that program yesterday. And we've been able to increase some of the dollar allotments for that up to potentially $15,000, depending on what you're able to create. Their student resources, teacher resources, the course content, it's broken down into different pieces that you can be paid for, which is incredible opportunities for educators in Iowa to really contribute to this platform, which was the whole point. So that's funded out of that 17 million, which is whole separate. And then I'll talk a little bit about some of the, let me finish going through the sheet. And then we'll talk about how we're going to use some of it. The maximum reservation for admin, that is what's required for the department. We have to spend some of it on certain things internally. And as I mentioned last time, we need that simply from a staffing standpoint for processing. This will be a full-time job for individuals, just to make sure schools are reimbursed. We have hired the temp positions that will only exist throughout the duration of this funding. And that will certainly help with the processing part, so our consultants can give the expertise part on when districts have questions. The amount that we've spent to date and then the end of when it's available, so that one, one of the pots goes to 2024, the rest are 2023.
Just curious, was it hard to find temps?
Um, we, it wasn't. So, yeah. Yes, it was not in this instance. That was great. What's different now about, and again, I'm going to just call them ESR one, two, and three. ESR one and two had different requirements than ESR three. ESR three has more specific requirements in terms of how it has to be spent, but it's not for the full amount. This is still very much in districts' authority to determine the impact that COVID had and how they want to mitigate it. What is required is some percentages where it has to be used on some certain areas. So 5% for implementation of evidence-based interventions and specifically addressing learning loss. A priority we already identified that we're identifying as accelerating learning. 1% for evidence-based summer enrichment programs and 1% for evidence-based comprehensive after-school programs. The department is required and just submitted a report to the US Department of Education, how we are going to utilize those funds, which is required in order to receive the remaining third. What is also different this time is one and two, we received the full allocation. And again, this is not money sitting in our account. There's access to funds that we have to immediately draw down and expend. We can't sit on them. With, with ESR three, we received the first two thirds right away that was available to give to schools. The remaining third was tied to submitting this report. And so that's been done. So what that will do is open up the funding opportunity for the remaining third. None of that in any way has prevented any school's ability to spend the funds or tied their hands in anything that we need. Part of that requires feedback from the field, extensive feedback from, from many groups of individuals. So we've sent out surveys that have touched upon a really broad group of student populations, not just student populations, but legislators, administrators, students, communities to give us feedback on, on the, the use of these funds and what they've seen as areas that have been impacted. I don't have the full survey results for you right now. We will get those to you later. But what it did show us is it reinforced what we already knew that the priority, priority areas were. The first one was really just the technology, you know, and we had to turn everything off. Schools that already had that in place were able to switch much faster than schools didn't. Teachers aren't ready, trained, could switch faster than schools did it. Families that had access to the internet were in a better position than those who don't. So we had to mitigate all of that. And I think we're almost forgetting that as being, that was the biggest hurdle right away. But with all the money we've had and the resources we've been able to provide, we've been able to address that. Because that's not just about school and educational learning, that's about communities and people. And this past year, if you didn't have that, you were impacted in a much different way. So lots of money going to address that issue that we will never let ourselves be in that position again, because we just can't. It's not solved right now, but it, there's plans and funding in place to make sure that is addressed. And then I think, you know, the other two real, real, you know, obvious ones that have been reinforced is just the, the social emotional impact that it's had on everybody. And so again, it reinforces how, as we look at this, you know, 100 million dollars that we have, we can designate a substantial amount to address that. So we have plans in place that we're going to be sharing in the near future of how we're going to have a much more impactful focus on, you know, we can really make a difference with a lot of schools. Our intention from day one has not to spend it on the department. It's to leverage our capacity to do more for schools. With that money, we could do more than if they just had the, a single point, you know, what each school got. The other thing to remember is that this went out to schools on a Title I funding formula. So not every school got the same amount. It was based on their, their low-income populations. The department can, as we put out resources, do that in a different way. We don't have to follow that same formula. So when we did Canvas, every school got the same amount, didn't matter what school you were. So we can do that same thing here with some of our tools. And I'm really excited about some of the things that we're going to be able to do to help. The other thing it told us that I think we also knew is that this experience had the greatest impact on those with, who were low-income families and had learning disabilities, which again, we knew. And so let's make sure we don't take that for granted and we make changes that help support that. That goes to doing things beyond just what the school can do. It's the wraparound services. It's the partners. It's the connections that we can make. And we are doing those things and we're going to give you some more information about how we prioritize that to make that, how that changes going forward. That goes back to the, when I talked about the essential services, you know, it's not just about the learning. It is so much more than just about the learning that happens for kids in these schools. And that's the stuff we have to make sure we pay attention to as well. Um, and then really just the capacity of how we can provide resources for schools that, that they've shared in here as well. Let me make sure I didn't miss something. A couple of the things we've asked about too is, one, you know, one specific request was around, you know, schools ability that, you know, just think of a water bottle filling station, when you think about access to clean water, what that could look like. So that is a question that we've asked in terms of how we might be able to fund separately. Schools can already do that now, but if there are some additional funding available that either through our funds or some shared funds that we have, we can provide that resource to schools as well. We have received significant requests on HVAC systems and ventilation for schools. That's a long-term improvement that they could make. Those get a little bit trickier and that's why we need our staff to work with them about how that's done. But there's, most of them, I think, were able to authorize and they're using that as a priority to make a real long-term change. And then childcare. So another separate initiative that we're working on as well, even with the governor's office and some of our other partners, is the impact on childcare and how we can better strengthen the connections with schools is really important. So there will be some additional funding. We have got some survey information, information on how many schools have these current partnerships, what they look like. How can we expand it to really extend that early learning, the early literacy that we know that we need through some of these fundings, through some of these partnerships to make sure that no matter where you live, you have that. You talk about urban versus rural, what it looks like. Lots of times there has to be partners, but if we connect it more to the school, if you think about the support that provides to a family, when I drop off my child, you know, what's available to them from early childhood to when they graduate. And then the other side of that is how are we better connecting it with even post-secondary? So, so as I shift a little bit, when we talk about, I've started going on, you know, I scheduled those work-based learning tours this, this spring, and we'll continue a little about, maybe a few in the summer, but again, in the fall. The point there is to rethink how we're connecting with our communities, how we're connecting with the post-secondary. And if I'm a child, you know, from, from early childhood to when I graduate, what does it mean for me to be future-ready? What does it mean for me to have future opportunities and understanding how every partner is part of that continuum? So connected when you talked about future-ready, we're having different conversations of what that means. It's not a thing that lives over here. It should be everything we do from early childhood to workforce. And everybody should know where they fit. So at the department, as we're looking at this, we're trying to realign, you know, think of the life of the child as you go towards the future. And it's not a academic or worth path. It's a path to the future, which ultimately leads you to some sort of profession. It ultimately leads you to a path to a better life. And we need to rather than have a single, you know, this is how we do it, this is how we do school. And then we try to fill in, we need to change how we do school. So every, all the things you guys talk about, as we look at that individual plan for the child, we have to create more options for all kids to have a broader access out. And we have to change what we think about what that means. And that involves not just schools, but parents and communities and far more partnerships. I have visited incredible partnerships from larger schools to smaller schools and how they figure out how to work with their businesses, how they figure out how to work with community needs. And the experiences of these students versus just filling out a form is incredible, because they're getting skills they really need for jobs and they're getting opportunities right in their communities. That is how we change some things. And so what's, what's sort of fascinating is how all these priorities have sort of fallen into the same, same funnel right now, because we've seen them all having the same impact and need. And now as we take this money and we talk about reimagining, we see how it all fits together. Now we have to get schools there. And so as we talk about how we can prioritize that work, how we can drive that work, how we can provide models, those are some of the things you're going to start seeing more from us, more from me, more from the department. As I talked yesterday about how we pivot to a different direction going forward, we're done reacting to the past year. We're really going to start driving things going forward. And I think there's a lot of incredible things you're going to hear next few months of things that we're going to do, because we have the money to do that, that I think will be really exciting work that I'm looking forward to sharing more detail with you on.
Thank you. I think, yes. I have a question. So I'm excited to hear everything that's happening. And I think that it's great that schools really have an opportunity here and the funding to do these things. I guess, how do we, how do we know that they're actually following through? I think that one of the kind of themes of this is, are they doing it? Are they doing it well? So they have all this money, they can, you know, do these, have these partnerships and do these things. And now it's kind of like, so how do we, how do we know what they're doing and whether it's successful or not?
I think it depends on what, what's the it, what's the thing you're asking for? So is there, you know what I mean? Like there's, as we prioritize some work with mental health and we, and childcare and work-based learning, we're going to have some sort of structures in place of how we help lead that work. If you're talking just about how they're spending their money. Part of the issue with that question is that, one, they have to tell us how they're spending all of it, because we have to approve that. But we can't tell them how to spend it. Outside of those limited percentages of what they have to do, it is, it is the full discretion of the district and how they want to spend those funds. How we implement our funds can help drive work that we want to prioritize. And schools engagement with that work, we absolutely can follow up on. How they maximize their funds is really within their purview.
What does approval mean then, if they can do whatever they want?
So there's like grant requirements and federal spending requirements. So there's some things you can't spend it on.
These are really big parameters. They can't go outside.
Correct.
But within there.
They're pretty broad. Yes.
So what about lower-income schools? So I know that I've heard things about, you know, schools, certain schools like within Des Moines, and I can't speak to a lot of other schools, but I, you know, have friends who have taught at these schools and are like, get me out of here. And so they switched and they moved to Inkling, because these schools are so, you know, so terrible or, you know, so how? And I think that we have kind of, with the funding and everything that was schools, I mean, there are schools that are kind of, I guess, like lower funding schools or schools are doing worse than other schools. I mean, I think that's kind of a reality that we're in right now. So how do we help those schools and how is this funding? I mean, are we just going to let them spend it on whatever they want? Are we going to help them prioritize what they, because I mean, it kind of seems like some schools maybe just need to get to like set. And then some schools who have more money maybe or have more of a tax base can maybe kind of really move forward. They're in a better place, but those schools that were kind of struggling at the beginning of the pandemic, I'm sure they're kind of still struggling. So how do we kind of get them to the place where they should have been and then maybe help them to kind of go further than that?
Um, there's sort of two parts to that question. One, you know, those schools would have, the lower-income schools would have received a lot more money than higher-income schools. So I think, and I forget the exact number, there was an example where Waqeeh only got like 800,000 and Des Moines got 50 million. I mean, it was, it was that different. We cannot tell them how to use it outside of the purview of what we have. But that doesn't mean we don't reinforce priorities. And as we look at the priorities that we have, we can certainly assist them with questions. But it is very clear in the federal guidance that we can't say this is how you have to spend it. We can certainly help encourage things. And I think, you know, if there's, and families, you know, to be engaged in part of this too. The community, you know, knows that this money is available and knows that there's changes for schools. You know, how can you engage with your own community? We do have resources on our website that talks about parent engagement. And maybe that's one of them, but I think, you know, that there is, if there's a concern, they could reach out to the department. But we, it was, it's a little bit limited in terms of how we can impact what that looks like.
Yeah, I think Janelle's probably smarter than that than I. And I just want, I mean, parent engagement, I think, is so important. And I think education of parents, but I also think that, you know, it's, it's one of those things where I, you know, I, I talk a lot to a lot of Black community members and their parents, and I feel like they, they might feel a certain way, right? So they might not be trustful of teachers and administrators in the school because of certain actions that have happened in the past. So it's hard to get them engaged when maybe they don't trust the system, right? So I think that in some communities, you have to kind of figure out how to move past it. And I know, I don't know what that looks like for those communities, but it's hard to, I think it's easy to say. I think it's so important, but if, if a family or if a community feels distrustful of that system, then it's hard to get them engaged in what's happening. And it's hard to get their children engaged in what's happening as well. But sorry, go on.
No, that's fine. I was just going to mention that another thing that we're doing is examining some evidence-based practices and coming up with a kind of a list that we think are good practices related to accelerated learning in literacy and math and social emotional behavioral health, so that districts can access a list of practices that we think are good practices and know the characteristics of those things, so they know which populations they have the biggest effect with. And then also providing them guidance on how they can review other things that aren't on our list. Because our, and our list is not an approved list, it's just a list of practices that we know have big effects for kids. And then giving them tools to kind of evaluate other practices that they might already be doing or that they come across, so that, you know, we're getting, we're getting bang for our buck.
Thank you for bringing that up. And that was something that was reinforced in the survey. They want the resources from us, because we can, as you mentioned, that's evidence-based practices that, that they can use. And so they know, we want them to be confident that they have a resource from the department. We believe it's something that can be effective. So can't make them use them, but we can certainly make it available to them, which is a good practice anyway, is, you know, is permanently available. But as they look at how they want to mitigate the impact this has had on their own school community, which could look really different. You know, I think there's, there's a clear distinction between what, how it's impacted some of the rural communities, some of the urban communities, what your learning model looked like in the past year, that's all going to be different. And so there has to be some flexibility for those schools to meet those needs. But there also has to be tools available for them to know how to do it. And that's where we can come into play to help them, here's the tools you need. And if you ask for our help, we absolutely can assist you. We just can't direct, you know, the path you need to go. And I think that gives them some options. There's some great plans, you know, and schools are being really creative in how they connect with their communities and their partners and understand the work. So hopefully, again, as we learn from those different models, we highlight some of them. We try doing some of our communications as well. We think that that can be helpful as also.
What's the elevator version of the AEA's involvement in this process?
So sort of secondary, and here's why. The funds can only go to the schools. And so, but they can go to reimbursement of services. So when you look at, for example, I'm a school that has certain, whether it's a specific student population or a specific service that the AEs can provide, they can be reimbursed for that partnership as well. As we lay out some of our broader work, I think we have a scope of where everybody kind of lands within that framework. But that's the difference where it's, you know, at the very beginning, when we talked about, there was all this money. We were getting all these requests for, for money. And it's not, we just give people money. It has to be specific to sort of a reimbursement or a service or something that an authorized user could receive.
And DOE still has its normal enforcement oversight.
Correct.
All of that. So that's good, right?
Yes, yes.
That interplays with this too.
Yes. Yep, absolutely. It doesn't change any of that. It just, it's this specific carve-out to these funds for this short period of time.
Well, if we really believe in multiple control of schools, then we're getting it.
Yes.
And you can provide tools. I think it's the best possible situation.
Yeah. So, so that's our overview. A couple of the things I meant to add to that I, that I forgot. And I think you mentioned something earlier about examples of things on what, what work-based learning things look like. We're looking at playbook for a sort of registered apprenticeship, some of these different partnerships could look like, which again, would be a tool for schools use. I've heard that a lot as we, as I go on, visit schools. I'd love to do this, but we don't know how. And it's going to look different for me than it does another school, but it gives them just something to potentially follow. So all those things to help it be more meaningful, we're trying to get there. And then, you know, in any way, we can help support the schools if they want to try and implement something, we absolutely have the resources for that.
And then I have one quick question. You mentioned that you were having a lot of discussions around what future-ready is going to look like in the future. How many students are involved?
So we're just having some internal conversations right now of how we're going to realign it. The external engagement will be coming.
Okay.
Yep. It's a big thing. When you start looking at it, it's kind of everywhere. And so if it's everywhere, are you really getting anywhere? We're trying to kind of get everybody to know where they fit, but that'll absolutely be part of the process of these. We start to really be more directive with that word.
And like when you start doing business partnerships and stuff like that.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
To prove second.
Thanks. All right, it's moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right, Thomas.
So you have six rules, starting with tab F. Just an explanation of circumstances. The delayed end of the session, pushback rulemaking and pushback the ability to get things out for notice and comment. Perhaps circulated internally and externally, so. Storyboarding out for the rules that you give notice of intended action today. If everything goes as planned, you will see them at your August board meeting for adopted and filed. And so those are rules five C through five F, tabs H through tab K. If everything goes as planned with notice and comment, you will see those again in August. If they're adopted at your August board meeting, they will become effective September 23rd. The two rules that you just approved on your consent agenda, as well as if you approve rule five A and five B, tabs F and G, they will become effective August 4th. They will be come effective August 4th. So in advance of the start of the school calendar. So starting first with school health services. This is a big rule. This is, you heard some briefing about the content yesterday from Kathy Birch, Barb Anderson, Brad Niebling and Barb Olend. The rules are largely what you noticed as part of intended action at your March meeting. But want to walk through some fairly insightful comments received from Margaret Buckton on behalf of both the Urban Education Network and the Rural School Advocates of Iowa. Those are laid out in a comment and response format, starting on page two. So what the comment, commenter asked for, how the department proposes the board responds. This is all from Margaret. There are a couple of technical things that the department made some changes to, but the numbered comments are from Margaret Buckton. The first, she expressed concern that these rules could be interpreted to require therapeutic classrooms. And the department's response was, no, those are not required, but therapeutic services are part of a suite of services that all students have to have access to in a, in a dedicated classroom or otherwise. Comment two was a reorganization of a sub-rule and it made sense for clarity and readability. Comment three, same age grade to similar age grade. I think that made sense. If you've got a therapeutic classroom with four students, makes sense. And we would sort of allow schools to adjust to what similar is, understanding there is no real, you know, normal is, normal is the average of abnormalities. Of one five-year-old might be different than the very same five-year-old, but might be more similar to a seven-year-old. So we would allow schools to have some latitude in determining how similar, similar is for the academic and the therapeutic purposes of that classroom. Comment four. The current rule, the proposed rules that you noticed required for students without IEP, students who are general education students who are placed in therapeutic classrooms, to have that placement reviewed every 60 days. Rural School Advocates of Iowa and Urban Education Network requested sort of a longer or a locally determined timeline. The department's thought internally was 60 days is a good time, because these are students who are in general education. They don't have the external protections that come with special education law. And so that's why the suggestion to the, to this board is to maintain that 60-day time period. There was a discussion about purchasing seats or holding seats or having a right of option. If I join a consortium, I get two seats. The concern from the department is the Field of Dreams phenomena. If you build it, they will come. If I, if I buy two seats, I will use two seats, whether or not I have two students who are suitable for placement in a therapeutic classroom. So we would prefer, the finance folks would prefer to workshop with schools about starting up a therapeutic. would prefer to workshop with schools about starting up a therapeutic classroom rather than funding it in a way that might create an incentive for an appropriate placement.
I may make a differ with that one. My experience now with therapeutic, but with other especially classrooms with students, a lot of needs. If you're the one that's sponsoring that program, if you do not have enough students to fill it, you either don't offer the program or you find other schools that have students that would definitely use that program. And they commit to sending appropriate number of students. It's not all their students who qualify, but from an administrative point of view, being able to do this may assist some therapeutic classrooms to start rather than not start.
And I think that the, within that, the, the advanced planning is important. And I think my finance colleagues, Tom Cooley and his team would be more than willing to get folks to yes. But get that, get folks to yes in a, in a thought, in the thoughtful way that you described. And then the other in external safety valve is the waiver process. I have a specific circumstance. I seek a waiver of this particular rule from the director. As part of my waiver application, I offer specific evidence that student rights will be protected. So that rather than make a blanket change into the rule, my finance colleagues and I think that the wiser course of action is to provide technical assistance and rely on the waiver process.
That waiver process, be very clear to those people in this.
Yes, there's a, chapter four sets out what is required to seek a waiver, the, the most important.
Would he recommend that they pursue a waiver?
We have talked, we have talked about folks, under appropriate situations, part of workshopping that either the content area folks or the substance, the finance folks have. But whether or not a waiver is appropriate or possible is always, is always part of being a service agency.
Delay the process.
The rules for waiver, a waiver application have a fixed timeline on it. So you ask the, you ask the question, you get an answer. The next request would, the next comment was, as part of the reimbursement process that the code sets out. Ms. Buckton suggested including specifically naming that children, that the, as part of the reimbursement process, the district certifies that the child does not have a weighted IEP. That makes sense because it's a code requirement. Item seven. The, the rules as noticed required training every year. Ms. Buckton suggested regularly, but at least as often as a renewal cycle. And when we were discussing this internally, annual, maybe should be an option, but not a requirement, but a renewal cycle is five years. Knowing what we know now childhood mental health, had we known that five years ago. So that's why the response to Ms. Buckton's comment is regularly, but no, no less frequently than three years. The next comment eight shows her sensitivity to just the administrative practicalities, starting the training calendar from the beginning employment or changing from accepting employment to beginning employment. Makes sense. Comment nine. She requested that training and documentation for schools that do not have therapeutic classrooms not include training about therapeutic classrooms. And when we look at the legislation, schools without therapeutic classrooms could make those referrals. So even if I'm in a district that is not operating one or part of a consortium, I might be making a referral to a district that is. So the response was to keep that as a training requirement.
So the, when you talk about training, who is being trained?
Teachers on, teachers on reporting, like the specific.
So all teachers or just?
Teachers involved in a therapeutic classroom. Comment 10. So those comments related to Senate File 236, the therapeutic classrooms, classroom management, supportive classroom environments. The next comment related to behavioral health screening. The, the telehealth provided by private providers in the school. All of Ms. Buckton's comments are addressed by the text of the statute. All three of the comments are things that either no changes needed because there's sufficient flexibility or local determination in the statute or the change she requested would be reimagining the statute in a way that is solely the purview of the legislature. So there were some additional comments by the department, one of a cautionary nature, that at least one school district is calling classroom clears bathroom breaks, so they don't have to do any. Okay, y'all, let's take a bathroom break. And that, we just wanted to reinforce that it doesn't matter what you call it. The label doesn't matter. The function is what matters. And so with that, those are the comments and responses. And have any, the department recommends adoption and filing of these rules, chapter 14, and I'm looking for any questions.
I like the way you've done this. Thank you.
All of the model from the West Department of Education. Very rarely do I say, very rarely do I say the feds do things right. But when they do notice and comment, they
I like this.
Byline it. So I'm going to try to line by line it.
I like this.
Or for things that are not administrative, like chapter, you know, chapter two, the rulemaking. The things that people will use, that's, that is the department's intent going forward to each comment.
Of a response.
Comment, rule, response.
I like that. That's very helpful. Thank you.
So the motion would be to have these amendments to chapter 14.
Correct.
Also.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
And I, I think regarding the, the discussion that Dr. Robbins and I had, we can always sort of check to see if this is a barrier. And if it is a barrier, bring it back for further rulemaking. But right now I think there are sufficient tools, either through technical assistance or the waiver process to get things up and running. The next rule is adoption and filing of online and virtual learning. That would be tab G in your either paper or virtual workbook. Again, several comments from Margaret Buckton on behalf of both the Rural School Advocates and Urban Education Network, similar format of comment response. And first comment was maybe we need to define what an online learning platform is and also specify that the school, the non-public, the public school or non-public school gets to choose which platform they use. We may support with a statewide purchase, but they're not required to use. And I thought both of the, the department thought that both of those comments were, were well made. So online learning platform was added to the list of definitions and that the online learning platform selected is in the sole discretion of the school district nonpub or AEA. The second comment was a comment that, you know, maybe would be ripe for legislation. There are two things which are regulated. Telecommunications, narrow band over the ICN and virtual learning, internet-based. And so the specific rule that Ms. Buckton was commenting on was on telecommunications, not on virtual or web-based learning. So, you know, the, the comments might be well-founded, but the specific language in code refers to the use of virtual instruction versus telecommunications. So no change, we'll continue to follow that. And I think that there, there are tools and approaches that if a school, schools have been using ICN courses to meet, offer and teach since right about the time that yours cooled. So it's still doable. It's not, it's not something that is needed to sort of make.
I don't know what he's talking about.
Oh my gosh.
Like I mentioned last night, I saw, I'm now feeling, I'm now feeling that I'm of a certain vintage because I saw my law professor's oil paintings hanging up in the Boyd Law Building in Iowa City. So so that, that's the, you know, that's another one of those. We'll continue to monitor it. We don't anticipate it being any problems, but that, but if it is, it's either, it would need to be part of a legislative ask. Comment three, again, well-founded as far as attracting talent to teach in the virtual environment. Adding or appropriate experience. So let's say I have not taken the AEA course, but I'm transferring my license in from another state where I've already taught successfully in a virtual environment. So adding in that other experience to the list of teacher qualifications. Comment four. Requested definition or clarification about what a private provider is, which makes sense. It was added, the definition of private provider is now in rule 15-2, and it is for purposes of this chapter. Anybody that's not an AEA, LEA, or accredited non-public. So coursework developed by a region's institution, coursework developed by Drake, coursework developed by BBU. Coursework developed by the Thomas Mayes Online School for Wayward Boys. Anything that is approved sort of broaden and give some clarity about what it means to be an online provider. So folks don't need to ask us, is this, is this a private provider? The next suggestion would be broadening the, the ability to use funds to support.
I can miss something with that private provider. Is that buyer approved by the department or?
So there would need to be an approval process, but who could seek that approval process? So who could be an approved private provider?
Okay, it's just not any private.
Any private provider, but the definition of who could seek approval is, is broad. Yeah. But it would still, we didn't want to rule out folks from seeking approval by not meeting a definition of private provider. The approval process is still there. It just broadens the universe of who could seek approval. And who needs to seek approval. The next question, the next comment was regarding support of Iowa E-Learning Central. Adding in the ability to accept other funds in addition to federal funds. And one of the comments noted you know, fund, you know, private philanthropy to support computer science instruction. And so adding in other makes fairly good sense. Or funding options are better than less. Comment six. Requested a statement basically about the breadth of local control. And what this can be used for, you know, a well-founded comment that was added to the rule of construct, the list, the rules of construction at the end of the chapter, rather than trying to fit it in, into any particular rule, make that broad global statement that you know, that shall be broadly construed to allow school districts accredited non-public schools and AAs to meet the needs of individual schools in the local community. The department had some additional changes made by feedback, one of which came from a member of the Rules Review Committee. So being a member of the Rules Committee, I listened. And this representative asked that the department and the board through rule clarify that a district could not be completely online for all of its students. So there needs to be, based on some of the feedback we heard yesterday, then there ought to be a brick and mortar option. And so that is added as new subrule 1512, sub six, that, you know, unless there's another pandemic. It would apply to, it would apply to any school. So a cyber charter. You know, we have two virtual schools already in Iowa, but they are attached to a brick and mortar district. And so who, you know, at least, you know.
These kids don't go to school.
They don't go to, they don't go to school there, but they could.
Participate in the FX and things like that, right?
So there, you know, the, the virtual schools that currently exist are attached to brick and mortar districts. So there, you know, Clayton Ridge has Clayton Ridge High School as well as the Iowa Virtual Academy or the K-12, I forgot which is which. This rule of construction would say, I can't be the Iowa Virtual Academy completely disconnected from a district.
It just has to be attached to.
And there has to be a brick and, brick and mortar option.
Okay. New charter schools that we approve that aren't associated with an existing district. How does this apply? I mean, I'm confused on that.
Well, if I'm a, if I'm a virtual charter, if I want to be a virtual charter, I'm not a, and I, I'm not the school board, state board model. You know, I don't want to prejudge anything, but part of the new charter school bill would allow flexibility from rules unless otherwise required. So I want to at least create the space for this board to consider a virtual charter based on the wisdom and the thoughtfulness of the virtual charter's application. I don't want to, but for virtual charters that are not a school board, state board, proposed virtual charters that are not a school board, state board model. I don't think chap, chapter 15 as adopted would rule them out. I think that this board would have to evaluate the wisdom of being a virtual charter on its own merits. And then there was an additional suggestion made from the department, from staff about open enrollment to virtually, to completely virtual schools. And if I am seeking open enrollment to a completely virtual school, do I have to be approved to, to, to accept open enrollment yet? Yes. Do I have to seek approval if I am just building it for my own resident students? And that's been a question over time. The proposal from the department is you don't have to seek approval, but you're still held responsible for all of the requirements. Because that really would be a matter of local governance about how, you know, are you your own, are you a program associated with a school or are you a separate school for organizational purposes? But if you're accepting students in, from some other district, there needs to be there needs to be that additional level of accountability because you're accountable to somebody else's taxpayers. So with that, if there are any questions, my colleagues and I are happy to answer them.
I was just being, that was advocated if I want to set up a, a school and I've got a, a classroom or two that may not have any students and everybody else is virtual, would that be approved? There's a classroom there. They can come. They choose not to.
And.
Maybe my son-in-law has a, my grandson comes and for part of the day.
So there's a difference between I'm building something for a specific student or a specific student through course selection ops into entirely online versus. Yeah. I think we'd have to see what that, what that looks like, but if it's just for my resident students, I think that that would be something that would be managed.
Just equating it to the bathroom break for the, to getting around the rules. That's all I'm equating.
Well, oh, but then the, in, there's a, there's an additional check on that because I have to describe my virtual programming, whether it's specific classes or a suite of services that is finger quotes, a school that I only offered to my resident districts, that has to be described in the CSIP, the, the school improvement plan that, that is filed each year. So there would be some internal and external accountability the department would be able to be aware of. These courses are offered online or this suite of services is off, is offered online.
That's fine. I was, I just think it's like a little, not for, not for the rest of the country, but for Iowa, this is kind of a brave new world.
And a, a, again, part of reimagining um, would be sort of like, did the needle move too far in one direction? And, you know, it's hard to put shaving cream in, back in the can. But at some point, is this a risk that the board thinks is worth taking? My colleagues and I think it is.
I'd move that we accept these recommendations and adopt these changes to chapter fifteen.
Awesome.
It's mentioned second, all those in favor say aye.
So procedurally, this is one of the more interesting things, any nays? Um, the next is the most interesting, one of the more interesting procedural things that I've done in rulemaking. I started the department in two thousand and six. You're amending a rule you just adopted. Uh, because of a legislative change. And Senate File five forty-six, last year Senate File twenty-three-ten included students in independent private instruction in Iowa E-Learning Central in the, in the platform that the department was authorized to build as well as services offered by the AEA. Very next legislative session, same party control in both chambers struck it. So this rule strikes and conforms with Senate File five forty-six. Students in independent private instruction, students who are, you know, completely off the grid. Finger quotes off the grid. Are, do not have a right to access Iowa E-Learning Central and, um, virtual virtual offerings from the AEs. I just present to you, the department presents to you rules based on legislation that was passed. And so that and thought it was important enough to do a separate rulemaking rather than combining it in the adopted and file that you just passed. It's just for, for sequence and understanding and explaining to uh, the homeschool advocacy communities. By the way, this bill was put forth by the homeschool advocacy community. So with that, uh, questions about the amendment to chapter fifteen, which amends that which you just adopted?
I have a question on page four. It says, provided such students registered with the school district. And this, of course, private instruction is homeschooling, right?
Yes. So competent.
So my, my question is, it's my understanding that that if you avail yourself of your homeschooling and you avail yourself of what the state offers, they have to make certain requirements. But this doesn't mean that. Is that correct? I mean, just because they register with the school district doesn't mean they're abiding by any of the requirements. Maybe I've got this.
And part of that is an artifact by the, the distinction drawn in twenty thirteen between competent private instruction and independent private instruction. So if I am, if I'm participating in competent private instruction, I'm, you know, I'm getting my, my parents are getting me assessed. They're filling out Form A, they're letting the school know what my curriculum is, then that is a necess, that is a prerequisite to accessing Iowa E-Learning Central. Independent private instruction, I don't have to do any of that in the school can only inquire, are you receiving independent private instruction? So, um, part of your question is.
If they know.
If, yes, yes. And I don't feel like that answered all of your questions, but I.
I'm basically just saying, uh, uh, I think I understand the term private instruction, but by registering with the school district, they are not committing to do anything else with the state. It's just saying they have to register.
Right.
And that's it.
I'm registering for this class. I'm filling out Form A.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm being, I'm being assessed. But this doesn't tie me into anything other than that. And then the requirements of the course for just registered.
And if, and if asked, they have to give a report to the state, right?
For, for competent private instruction, yes. For independent private instruction, no. Those are the, um, you know, are you receiving independent private instruction, assuming you know, to ask? Yes. Discussion done. Um, but with that, um, this is a frankly, a drag and drop from the legislation that was just signed. So any questions?
Just to approve of a public hearing.
Yeah, uh, public hearing on this would be scheduled for, um, July twenty. Anticipated coming back to your, um, August meeting.
I assume a public hearing be held. Second.
The move second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, sorry. Any opposed? I say. Very much in case. I can't remember what I said.
So the next, um, notice of intended action is open enrollment, uh, chapter seventeen. And this is complex because it incorporates, uh, three different House files or three different pieces of legislation from the last, um, the session that just gavelled, gavelled out. The first is the elimination of voluntary diversity plans. Currently, five districts have voluntary diversity plans, limiting open enrollment in or out. Um, largely based on some combination of, uh, income or, uh, English learner status. In those five districts are Postville, West Liberty, Waterloo, Des Moines, and Davenport. The House File twenty, or two twenty-eight, which became effective immediately, eliminated the ability to have voluntary diversity plans in, which remains in place, court ordered desegregation plans. So if a court makes a finding that District X, uh, engaged in unconstitutional unlawful discrimination based on race as part of the open enrollment plan, uh, the, a court could order a remedy. The ability of a court of competent jurisdiction to order a remedy remains in place. The districts may no longer have self-selected voluntary diversity plans. The next, um, bill, which Renee and I just, Ms. German and I discussed at length yesterday was substantive changes to open enrollment as part of House File eight forty-seven. In the dates for kindergarten, uh, open enrollment for kindergarten for children who are already receiving special education, pre-kindergarten services. As well as, uh, adding some additional, uh, good cause for late open enrollment, including an additional good cause which may be appealed to this body. And that additional good cause is failing to, uh, consistent failure to reasonably respond to a student's failure to meet basic academic standards. That criteria, which will be part of your jurisdiction to hear open enrollment denials, that's a big criteria. And for that reason, it's, it's reserved. I anticipate, the department anticipates having something much more concrete and actionable at the August meeting. But that was part of House File eight forty-seven, that add, that added an additional grounds for appeal for denial of a late filed open enrollment request. And then the last thing, last big bucket of changes is Senate File two sixty for students who are participating in open enrollment. The Senate File two sixty requires for students with disabilities, the districts to cooperate to enable appropriate Medicaid billing. Cause, uh, right now that cooperation is voluntary and may not always happen. This, uh, rule change to implement Senate File two sixty will maximize the ability to draw down tight on nineteen dollars to support education of students with disabilities. So, um, there are some additional grammar and word choice questions or changes, but those are the three big categories of substantive changes. My colleagues and I are open for any questions that you may have.
What drove the statutory change?
Regarding diversity plans or the?
Yeah, well, the, I'm more interested in the the, have a, a late filed, um, request. You know, the. I think some of, after March one, this very amorphous consistent failure. Reasonably respond after.
And I think some of that was experienced from this past year. Where families have said, this is not working for us.
We had a couple of these kind of cases, didn't we?
For bullying and harassment. Yeah. And in some of the cases where like the online.
For this.
Not, yeah, in the fall, there was, there were a line of.
Wouldn't change any of that.
That wouldn't, those are, those are, those are final agency action, but for going forward, if um, and not just limited to pandemic circumstances. My child's just not reading and the classroom teacher's not following the plan, or my child is just not read, you know, at some point, you know, the district has to be allowed to try. But the, the crux of this is I'm not trying as a district. I anticipate this to be rare. But some of this were this concern and it was a priority of the governor. Some of this was surfaced based on, uh, response that some districts took to the pandemic, like, uh, you know, it's good enough for everybody else. So that's the, that's the motivator. I think that, again, going back to, uh, Robert's discussion yesterday, the pandemic just shed light onto what things that might have been going on beforehand. This was, um, once is one too many. But should this happen again in the future, hopefully it won't. This board will have the ability to provide some relief.
We give notice. Second.
The move in second. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, um, there, there are five districts that had voluntary desegregation plans. Are there any that have court-ordered desegregation plans at this point?
Not at this point. There were some court actions, but those were court actions challenging the legitimacy of voluntarily adopted plans. But those have, um, those voluntarily adopted plans, even of their court ratified, don't exist anymore because they were, they're voluntary.
Yeah.
So nobody is current, no district is currently operating under a desegregation order. Currently.
I like the addition in seventeen point eight two. We actually as far as if you're ineligible, one district, you're not gonna bail to none.
And that was again, part of legislation that I think that, you know, we want to, the governor was interested in creating more open enrollment opportunities, but not consequence-free uh, open enrollment opportunities. If you were, if you were sitting on the naughty chair in District X, you're sitting on the naughty chair in District Y.
All those in favor say aye. All right, the motion carries.
Chapter thirty-one, private instruction and dual enrollment. This is a companion rulemaking to the amendments. The amendment, the notice of intended action to amend the chapter fifteen that you just adopted. Coming out of the same, uh, Senate file. Going to walk through item by item. Item one on page three, amends definition of competent private instruction to sort of make it more readable. Private instruction, either um, fire under the supervision of a licensed practitioner or provided by a parent, guardian, or legal custodian. Independent private instruction, this is just a word addition that was made by, uh, Senate File five forty-six, adding in the term private, which is like Department of Retendency Department. Because private is part of that which is being defined, but legislature added it. So the rules will conform. Also within item three, um, striking some, no longer necessary references to Iowa acts from, uh, twenty thirteen. And, um, item three, similar, striking, uh, the, the top half of item three on page four, striking no longer needed references to Iowa acts that have, have been codified. And then the top of page five, since the Iowa SIS is now spring administration for everybody. This moves the deadline for students who choose in private instruction, if you choose ISAS is their progress measurement or their form of assessment to August one. Uh, most just, some districts wouldn't have their ISAS results back in time to do the June thirtieth report. So, um, in consultation with, um, the testing folks in homeschool, the homeschool advocates, August one seems like a good date. Which allows sufficient time to be actionable for the coming school year if the child did not make progress. Item four and item five, sort of took out words that annoyed me. Maybe in need of versus may need, uh, simpler is better. Item six, similar, uh, changing the deadline, moving the deadline in light of the fact that everybody, eh, eh, everybody who tastes at ISAS takes it in the spring. And deleting references that are no longer needed. Items seven and eight. Similar, removing obsolete, um, no longer necessary references. Item nine. Moving the date for baseline evaluation from May one to May thirty-one, again, acknowledge, you know, allowing uh, the full ISAS assessment window. If ISAS is not given until mid-May. Item ten. You know, if you're taking the state assessment, if it's good enough for children who are not in homeschooling, it should be good enough for you. Item eleven, uh, make some changes regarding portfolio assessment. Instead, instead of taking the multiple guest test, I'm having a portfolio evaluated. That baseline should align with the standardized testing date. Items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, make those same data alignments. And item fifteen, sixteen, and through the rest of the file, remove unnecessary code reference, uh, tax references. So, I have colleagues who might be able to answer questions that I can't. I believe they're joining virtually. Buffy Campbell from the department, the department's homeschool expert, but any questions regarding for me or Ms. Campbell regarding chapter thirty-one? But any questions regarding for me or Ms. Campbell regarding chapter thirty one?
Can I get a motion?
That we. Notice. I intend to adopt. The amendments to chapter thirty one.
Second.
I spent it moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Alright, the motion carries.
Then the last. Proposed rule that we're bringing to you for consideration is chapter thirty six, Tab K in your board. Book athletic eligibility or extracurricular interscholastic competition. This is making some changes in light of. House File eight forty seven. And also in light of. Realities of family life in twenty twenty one. Item one of the rules. Recognizes with this additional text for purposes of this sub paragraph, contemporaneous change in parent residence. Also includes, I'm moving from one parent to another. Because, you know. It would be great if everybody was. Were June Wally in the beef. Or if, you know, if but families, families come in all shapes and sizes and forms. And sometimes I move. From one parent to another, or I move from one household to another. Which may or may not be court ordered. I'm just not feeling it with mom. I'm moving to just, it's just not working. Me and mom just aren't syncing up right now. But my life would be. Better for both mom and me if I went with the other parent.
Or Betty and I, it's Dick, Jane and Sally.
But it doesn't even have to be a reason, right?
Right.
You just move.
Right, and it doesn't have to be court ordered because a lot of times folks got, yeah, well. It has to be for something other than school purposes, so like. The the general residence rules still apply. But if I change residence, it doesn't have to be my entire family moves and it doesn't have to be a court order. Which is. But it does have to be a legitimate. Not, it it does, I'm. I'm moving my household. It would look strange if after the conclusion of basketball season, I'm instantly on good terms with my mom again.
Is is there a legal definition differentiation between guardian and legal guardian?
For school residence purposes, there are, there is not because a legal guardian, a legal guardianship is neither necessary nor sufficient to confer residency. So while my legal guardian lives in District X, but I'm still living in District Y. I'm a District Y resident, so whether or not a guardianship. Exists down at the courthouse is evidence, but it's not disposable. So a guardian could be somebody informally like I.
Anybody with a good name.
Who who I'm residing with. Item two adds in a. A. Exception to the transfer period, and that is if a school, former school or school district. Located in this state was unable to participate in varsity interscholastic sports. Because of the districts or superintendent's decision that we're not having swimming. If an Iowa district made that decision, open enrollment immediate or change in district residency immediately. Change in school attendance immediately eligible. If. Moline, if the Moline Maroons decided they were canceling swimming, I could not come to DAV West. I could not, it has to be a school in the state. That was some of the concern at the start of football. Folks coming in from out of state who may or may not have been legitimately establishing residence in Iowa. But for clarity going forward. The school that cancels the sport has to be in the state of Iowa. For the for this.
I'm in a Davenport school. Davenport North stops X. Davenport Central would let me be there, but I want to go to Bettendorf.
And I think that that would. School or school district, so.
Those are two different.
Right, and DAV North, DAV Central. I think that that would have to play out through. I I think that that's going to be a contested case, that 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 would be. A, that would be a potential contest the case, but B, that might be a good. Kind of a good topic for public comment, like for the the ordinary rule. Internal transfers between Davenport, between Hempstead and Senior. To be determines what that, what that is and whether or not the transfer will be allowed. There's. In in that case, I think it would be an interesting question. The general rule, Davenport CSD would would determine. Well, would that's would this override Davenport CSD's judgment? And I think that that would be some, and I'd be interested if there were any public comment on that.
Residency is challenged. Who is the one that brings the issue? Is it Boys Athletic Association? Would would that be? The the folks with the interest standing, if that's the word.
I have seen challenges from the union or the association. A neighboring district. Or a parent who says, I didn't want him to leave. I didn't want her to leave, that the, I don't want this process to intrude into our. Dynamics, so I've seen challenges.
So any of those groups or individuals has a right to challenge.
Well, they've got, they've got at least a, they've got an interest. I mean, I I think if the parent always has an interest in where her, his child is educated.
Those concerns maybe comes from the receiving district to as far as. Is this too eligible to play?
I don't want to.
Results could be really, really ugly. Yeah, so the case that you were talking about where we had a student move in this year from a, from a neighboring state, alright. State that was close, that challenge was made by the athletic.
Right.
Right?
And, right, and it. The similar, similar but not identical facts, because in one case, you came here just to play football. And in another case.
Pretty obvious.
In another case, you came for some non family, you came for some non football reason. Your whole household didn't come. But you and a parent came for some articulable non football reason, and that athlete was eligible. The first athlete who was clear it was all about football was not.
Depends on how you answer the question.
Are you?
There's a lot of coaching as far as how you answer that.
And.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Just speaking as somebody who read the transcripts. The quality of the athlete's representation mattered also. Then then the last item add, we'll just leave it there. Last item added. Additional, it it parallels the good causes that were added to the open enrollment rule, so. Open enrollment, good cause, chapter. Chapter seventeen, open enrollment, good cause, athletic eligibility, chapter thirty six. So a parallel, parallel structure. And so with that. Colleagues and I are open to any questions, comments or insults. Do you have that you have permission?
Alright, um, can I get a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Alright, the motion carries.
And anticipating the last four items on your August agenda. Thank you very much.
We're done right on time. Four minutes early. Yeah, there you go, see?
And for Davenport, he's unable to be here today, so Barbara's going to represent, and we did have Davenport is calling in today, which we sort of encouraged them to since it wasn't going to be. A long item and they hit, but just so that the board is aware, they are very open and willing to come here for every meeting. I I, we agree, so we wanted to give them a reassurance that they're. Not physically being here is in no way a negative reflection on them at all. And TJ is back in there, so. Thanks, hi TJ.
No, he's muted. You're muted. Hi TJ.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Same handout, I guess, that you have. I think you have it already, and it's color, which is much better.
Not do mining color at all. Yeah, we have. Do we wait for everybody to come back?
I was waiting for Betty.
Yeah.
TJ, we had a board member step out for a minute, so we're just waiting. It is, but you have one in color, which is much better than the one.
Your pockets are car.
Ignore it.
No, she, I I have the colored one. I didn't know.
The color ones in your, your packet. Yeah, in your board packet, it's a one in color, so.
So that one you don't need.
You don't, yeah, I mean, does anyone want it, I guess? Everyone's good? Okay, then just, yeah, we don't.
TJ, is Dan with you too, or is it just you?
It's just me today.
And that's okay, I just was curious.
Hilarious video, Alex, it's been out for over ten years. A person who's never met a book. He's handed the book. Doesn't know how to turn pages, so they showed him how to turn pages. Manually, he goes, oh, there's something underlying, I'm pressing it.
We have a car that has a push button start, and then my daughter got in a different car and she didn't know how to start it. And she'd never seen it, but oh. Yeah, she's like, but I reversed the button.
I do it all the time.
This is a key, this is.
Wrong with the world when you can't buy, when you buy a Corvette with not a standard transmission, you can have an automatic. What were those guys thinking?
I think about my my son who's so we we use Roku, you know, so we are just like on, we just watch anything we want, and so. We went on vacation and we were in, you know, hotel room, and so he wanted to watch something, he wanted to watch it now and had a fit. When I told him, this is TV, comes on when it comes on, I do not control, and he's like, but at home. If I, you know, you, you, you just press a button and it comes on. I'm like, yeah, that's at home, like we have access to those programs. I'm like, here, we don't, I was like, I don't control this, this is called television, and then he sees every commercial. Mommy, mommy, I want that, can I get that? Mommy, I want that, and I was like. So I'm like, I hate TV commercials for kids, every single toy he wanted, because he's not used to seeing commercials, he never sees commercials, you know? Most are bad.
Never thought about that, never seen commercials. Okay, alright, go ahead. Okay, are we ready then? This is an informational gathering today around Davenport, so there's no action needed. We're just looking at an update of their plan and TJ is here to answer any questions that you might have. I'm here as well to do that. Just a reminder of how this nice colored document is organized. So we have have our areas of leadership and teacher leadership support, finances, special education, MTSS, PBIS. And engagement, those are the big areas, and we've got stuff underneath them. The co, the columns there. After you see the description of the thing. There is Davenport's current data in this area, and I just wanted to make sure that you understand that that is connected to the very next column. That tells you what data we're looking at. So for example, in under leadership training. Implementation Board Training. The next column says one hundred percent. And that's reflective of the data that we're trying to look at, which is one hundred percent of board members attend training. So that's what that's connected to. The very next column is is reflecting where they think they're at in implementation of the stuff that they need to do. To move that data. And the that's, that's a like a scale of zero. We haven't started anything at all in this area. One, we started some stuff. Two, we're working on it. We're in there working on it. Three, we're almost completed and four, we are done. So oftentimes, that data in that, that that column at one hundred percent. Is related to how many action items have gotten done, right? So usually if it's one hundred percent, it's also rated as a four. Sometimes it's rated as a three because they're not quite done with everything they need to do to make sure that that one hundred percent is sustained. Okay? So just a reminder of how that 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 all looks. So in teacher leadership and support. They have. Or in leadership, they have one, three and one, two. And then the next area of teacher leadership and support, they've got a lot of stuff completed. They have four fours and a two, right? So they're they're working hard on one and they've completed several items. In in finances, they've rated themselves as being completed on on two items and almost completed on another. In special education, they've rated themselves completed fours. Do you want to look at that data? Like where's their data at too? And TJ will. We'll go through that. In MTSS, they have, they're they're at ones across the board. In PBS, it says that they're at ones across the board, but I just want to note that that first item under PBIS is the Crisis Response and Violence Prevention Plan. And and that should be a four. I'm not sure why it's rated in my copy anyway. As a one, it should be a four. They've done a lot of work. And they and they have created the foundation for MTSS PBIS. Because MTSS really is academics. Other, so they they've created that foundation on on which to build them. And then engagement, they they have rated themselves at one point five. So. Again, this is just a review of where they're at, and I I think Davenport's here to speak. Any of these items.
I think one of the things to highlight between the last time we were there. Our youth leadership teams have have absolutely taken, I know I spoke to that last time, but they've absolutely taken off. We did a committee of the whole where we had students from the, from an elementary school, middle school and a high school come and present. About the youth leadership teams. And they're, they're absolutely gaining root and taking off. It's it's quite impressive to see where our buildings and students have taken the youth leadership teams. To give you an example, we recently were hiring an assistant principal at one of our high schools and they involved the youth leadership. To give you an example, we recently were hiring an assistant principal at one of our high schools and they involved the youth leadership team in the hiring process to include student voice, which is an outstanding outcome of youth leadership teams. One of the comments that one of our elementary students made and she, she was in third grade. She said, well, the conditions for learning was missing a couple of questions that we wanted to ask. So we went ahead and added, did our own survey to the students because we wanted to make sure that we had all the information that we needed to, to, to help keep our school safe. Out of the park. So I think the, the addition, that, that's been an absolute game changer for us in Davenport. So I, I think that's the one new piece that really, we didn't anticipate taking off that fast. We, we anticipated that taking off at the start of next school year, but the, the, the students' voices, the things that we're hearing from our students, the things that they want to accomplish over the summer and that start of next year are quite impressive. So. I think that's what I would add to Barbara's presentation and be, be willing to answer any questions that you have as well.
I have a question. Again, student involvement is great. How were the student teams selected and do they represent a cross section of the school district?
Absolutely. So that's, that's one of the things I'm probably most proud about about youth leadership teams is they, they viewed the demographics and it, these aren't, these are students that absolutely represent the student body. There are students that might not have, that might have some behavior incidences on their, on, in, in their times in school. So the, one of the things that I'm most proud about the development of the youth leadership teams is it does absolutely represent the, the student body, but also all different aspects, you know, athletes, music, arts, students that have never had a behavior incident, students that, that are, have had behavior incidences. And so that, that's one thing that, that I would say has, has been a well implemented about adding youth leadership teams. In, in our youth leadership team development.
How did you guys develop the youth leadership teams? Cause you know, I think this is something that we've been talking a lot about. And I think that this, I mean, that's just phenomenal. I love, I love the story about the third grader. I, I wish we heard more stories like that. And how do you make sure that you have a, a good representation of the students that are in that building, right? And it's not just the top academic performers, right? Or was our handpicked, I think you say, by the administrators?
So we, we partnered with the AEA and, um, and the Department of Education to build this presentation and to build the process. And the process is absolutely outstanding. And would be easily, easily replicable in any situation, I would say. So I, I, that would be an outstanding future presentation for, for anybody that wanted to see it. How it's, how it's rolled out, how it's laid out. Students are invited. Some of our students, um, we, we had a Facebook message from one of our families that said, my daughter's never been asked, or son, I can't remember which one it was, my son or daughter's never been asked to be a part of anything like this. I'm absolutely pleased and, 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 and so the, the presentation, the, I would almost call it a program, uh, was developed with, uh, Barbara and her team. And the department, and the AEA, Kim Hoffman, Bill Decker, Shane Williams, and Diane Campbell, along with Jake Klipsch, uh, inside of our area helped develop that. So it, it's, it's a program. It's replicable and, um, it's quite impressive, if you ask me.
Thank you. Yeah. I think we would love to hear more about that in the future.
Have your, have your board meetings been in person or virtual or a combination of that?
We have been 100% in person. Yep. We've had, I, I think since October, I think we had some virtual meetings, but we, we've followed the, the health and safety guidelines to a T. And when we, when we come back face to face, we came back face to face. Um, one of the, one of the outcomes that I think is quite beneficial is that while we were online for our board meetings, we had to learn how to put things on YouTube. Um, and YouTube isn't, YouTube is a venue that young children, everyone knows YouTube. Where how we streamed our videos in the past, we're not, we're not as easily accessible. Well, at, at, when we did the youth leadership teams. The comment was made, you can go back and watch yourself on YouTube because you're now a YouTube star and the kid's eyes. Said something they understand, you know, they could share that with their friends. But another, another outcome is that we, we've had better, better attendance because people, our administrators, our faculty, our families can get online and watch it live at, at one o'clock. So it's, we've, we've had, um, we've had more participation, I would say. And a, and a kudos to Dan Goza. He, he added an online. So anybody that wants to comment virtually can, if they turn in their sheet by three o'clock that day, so to speak. So there, I would, I would say the virtual piece was an unintended outcome, a positive unintended outcome.
Awesome. May, may I ask you too, what kind of feedback you're getting, TJ, about what's going on in the district now? Can I just ask you, yeah, just generally, kind of feedback are you getting from your patrons?
Well, we're definitely heading in the right direction and that's, that's definitely felt. Um, we're getting that feedback. We're also still have a lot to go. I mean, we, we have a long way to go in, in this process. So recognizing that there are still quite a few hurdles to overcome. Processes and systems that need to be put in place. But the overall feeling is that we're heading in the right direction. It's been a very difficult year. So for me, for me to tell you that everything's feeling really good right now in education is, would, would not be an accurate statement. You know, the pandemic, the extended school, you know, our, our extended times in school. The, the, some of the, some of the difficult decisions that we've had to make in the middle of the year with our finances, it's just been a very difficult year. But the overall feeling is that we are getting ready to turn the corner. And, and heading into next year, there's, there's, there's quite some momentum gaining towards that. So I, I would say we're heading in the right direction, but I, I, I wouldn't say that everything's, uh, roses, roses either. But we are heading in the right direction. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and one thing I'll add to that too, is that, you know, starting after July, they'll be implementing their new organizational structure, their new leadership team. There's new staff that's been hired. So now you're going to see a very actionable item that's going to help lead some of the change that they've been working through in this past year. And I think that will help set things up a little bit differently as well.
Exciting.
Well, I would congratulate you on the hire that you stole away from Martha Town.
Thank you. We're very excited about.
Babe's excited about it.
Aaron is not too happy with us, right?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, it sounds like those youth leadership teams are doing some great work. I had, and so thank you for taking a lead in to implement those in your school district because it was super important for those students. I did have one question is so, for the students who aren't able to be a part of these leadership teams, because you can only have so many, starting off in the beginning. What opportunities are for the, are there for them to really be engaged with what's happening in the school district and to be able to affect their learning environment? Um, and then how do those students on the youth leadership teams interact with other students as well? Are they presenting, like doing educational presentations to them? Are they working with them to look through the data that they also have found as well? Or how does that work?
Absolutely. Those, and that's an excellent question. And I, I, as we move forward, those youth leadership teams will be seen as a conduit for students to hear those voices. One of the key aspects to youth leadership teams is having direct access to the administration. And once that is seen inside of the, uh, of the school environment, that will absolutely be the conduit for information flow. Also, there's plans for, um, if you look at some of the, um, the, the excellent examples that are out there of how, how our students can lead this charge. If you look at mentors and violence prevention through you and I, where the students are actually leading some of the sessions in the advisory periods in the secondary schools. Um, those are all excellent examples of how student, students can be the leaders of the charge. And, and the other pieces where students are actually analyzing the data and, and taking ownership of, of things that are happening and help building the plans. Is, are, those are all examples of how students' voices are being heard. Thank you for the question.
Do you also have any questions or comments? Well, I just want to say, you know, congratulate you again. I mean, this has just been awesome. Every single update I think you guys provided. It just, it really shows that, you know, you guys are really heading in the right direction. I appreciate all your hard work. And, um, I think it'll be really good to hear. Once you guys have the leadership team in place, um, you know, what actions you guys are taking. So I'm excited to hear more about that. So thank you so much.
All right. Thanks TJ. Thanks Barbara.
And I just have a quick question. Where sort of are we in terms of, are coming to a point where we're going to?
Yeah. Your next action on this will be in October. That's what we determined at the last meeting. So in October, we'll review where they're at and then we'll have some decision points for you at that time.
So I had a question. I should have raised this earlier. Um, about the calendar. So I think this has been brought up before, but typically we go on. We travel, um, in the September meeting or around then. And I was wondering if that was something that we were thinking of doing? Are we not thinking of doing that? Cause that was something that we do every September. I didn't know that.
We actually, well, I think it was something that we had discussed that you guys would do last year. I think we were going to do a travel in September and then COVID.
COVID hit. Yeah. So I'm just wondering if we're going to do it this year in September.
I think that's, that's completely up to you all. Um, we had talked briefly actually last night at dinner about, you know, perhaps finding some other location that you could go and, you know, tour or learn something.
Well, and I know that we had talked about coming up. I mean, I think that that was kind of one of the ones we were talking about. And then COVID hit, but I mean, so.
One thing we always did the BOE is we tried to go to every board member's area and gave them a chance to showcase, um, whatever was happening with their school, with their partnerships. Um, and so it gave sort of a context to why we were traveling, not just to travel. So whatever, however you would.
If Davenport is a decision point in October, wouldn't it make sense to go to Davenport?
We could certainly go to Davenport. Absolutely.
Certainly.
Mike has a resort.
I'm not going to make it. I'm just, you know, I, I don't know.
Actually, Brian, and I would love to talk to Amy about this. I mean, I think that's sort of a brilliant idea. And if you think about the authority of this board and, and the amount of time that we've spent with Davenport for us to travel there would be an incredible opportunity for all of you to see firsthand what's really going on and show the, the, that board a vested interest and maybe have some sort of connection. I think that'd be a great idea. Sorry, I, I want to go to Mike's because I'm going to.
How about Mike? How about weekly years next May? How about May? I think May would be a great time.
I think, I was thinking retreat.
Yeah. Can we do, can we?
So I didn't realize we did a September travel. I was thinking of.
Wait, you know what? Like since, since I've been on the board, we always have done in September. I don't know why we have always done in September. I mean, there was just no, I mean, I think that because it was during the school year and I think people wanted to avoid the winter season, obviously. So people were kind of like November, December. I mean, sorry, November, January, we're out. And I think that March was kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm okay traveling in March, but I think some people weren't as comfortable traveling. Um, so I think it was always kind of, and in the summer months were kind of out because I think they wanted to go see schools. And so schools, you know, so. But I mean, I'm okay doing it. I think the retreat would be a nice time.
So let's do this. Let's, we'll touch base and, and see if that would work and leave that as a potential for September, um, at Davenport and let you know as soon as we think we could coordinate that. And then have a conversation on retreat. I think would be a great, another opportunity to, to travel. Gives us a chance to be more connected. I mean, it's great to have presentations, but it doesn't replace what you can see when you're actually there. Um, so if we could set something up where we could see some of the programs that are up there, I think would be really valuable.
Plus I think you're right. It sends a nice message to where we're going, that we're engaged. We want to learn about, you know, we want to be involved.
Yeah.
Stakeholders.
You bet.
Awesome.
TJ may not want us.
He might not want us. Oh, no.
We're proud of him. Done a great job.
Are you doing, are you doing board reports? I have reports. I miss that.
I told you to wait on the thing you were. I think you should, I think that's good if anybody is here.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any? No one has anything. So before we adjourn, I just, I forgot to say that, um, I don't know if Judy's here today, but we just wanted to, on the record state that, you know, hiring and we are so sad to see her go. Judy has been here for I don't know how many years, but as long as I've been a board member, which obviously is not her entire career, but she has been so helpful and I rely on her a lot for a lot of things. And so I'm always bothering her. So I'm sure she'll miss me bothering her all the time. But I'm sure she'd probably rather spend time with her grandkids. So. But you know, I just want to say thank you to Judy. Um, she's been a great asset. So we'll miss her a lot.
Thanks for saying that.
Oh my gosh. 1960. I don't think we should be here.
Representative Chuck Grassley is on the plaque.
Is it?
That was a boy's state. I, I elected to the Iowa Commerce Commission. They were a five-member board and Harold Hughes at that time was the head of the, the ICC. Anyway.
Harold will do a fabulous job.
Let's keep those troop cups coming. I love them. All right. So. Oh, okay. So do I need to?